All this meeting in order, the City Commission, Rio Grande City, Wednesday, August the 17th, 2016, approximately 6:10 PM, here in Commission Chamber, City Hall, 5332 East, US Highway 33, Suite A, here in Rio Grande City, Texas. At this time, I will lead us in the invocation, followed by Commissioner Jones with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if we, everybody can please rise from the invocation. I'm gonna leave the invocation today. Heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings you have bestowed upon, beautiful city of Rio Grande City. Thank you for guiding us, protecting us, leading us to the path for eternal salvation. Heavenly Father, once again, our City Commission stands before you, with utmost deference and humility, we ask that you may lay your hand upon this City Commission and provide us with the knowledge, the wisdom, the courage, and the compassion to do what is right and just for the betterment of our community and all those we serve. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, the great allegiance to be Texas, one nation under God, indivisible.
Next, we have Roll Call Item B. Ms. Guerrero.
Mayor Villarreal.
Present.
Mayor Potem Garza. Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez. Commissioner Jones.
Here. Thank you, Guerrero. Next, business in orders, Item C, Public Forum. Number one, Nancy Perez and Claudia Diaz of Happy Paw's Animal Rescue will address the Commission regarding expansion of the animal control services and facility.
Good afternoon. I'd like to begin by thanking the Council and the mayor for allowing us an opportunity to appear. Like to introduce to you the volunteers, Mr. Alex Gonzalez, Ms. Claudia Diaz, and myself, Nancy Perez. I'd like to direct your attention, please, to the handout that was provided to you. Arguably Happy Paw's is a volunteer organization that works to rehome, that's a word that I coined, surrendered and abandoned pets in the city of Rio Grande City. Basically, what we do is we hold weekly adoptions at the Rio Grande City Fire Department from 9:00 AM to about 2:00 o'clock every afternoon. How we do it? At this point, since we are volunteers, the way that we've been able to do this is we have, through our own personal expense, we worm and provide basic wellness for the pets from the community in order to make them healthy and adoptable to people. We provide leashes, collars, and foods, and at this point, it has been at a personal expense from our volunteers and from ourselves. We have impacted the city in the following way. We have about a 90% placement for success rate with these pets. We saved the city on the cost of euthanizing. We've rehomed healthy pets into the surrounding communities. And the basic thing is that we have provided a compassionate alternative to euthanization. The goal of our organization is to continue to work collaboratively with the city to educate our community and our children, and to rehome healthy pets and animals to create a, basically, and foremost, to create a culture of compassion. Now, we come to the city tonight to ask for the following. We would like to request that the city provide a cost of basic wellness, vaccines and warming to these animals that have been brought either surrendered or caught to the facility, to consider providing a voucher to offset the cost of either, or a partial cost of spaying and neutering, because that's the way we keep the numbers down in the community. We'd also like the city to consider providing sanctuary for the animals. What happens is that at our events, we sometimes have animals that have not been adopted. And so thus arises the problem, what to do with these animals. I know that there is a period of time that the animals are allowed to stay at the shelter before they are euthanized. And we're asking for the city to consider the animals that are not necessarily adopted, at one event, be provided sanctuary and allowed to be adopted at a subsequent event. We also would like to come to the city and ask that the city consider providing emergency care. There are animals that come into the facility that are injured and suffering from an illness. And we ask that in those emergency cases, that the city consider providing vetting for those. I have, I know that on occasion, Dr. Margot at some point in time was involved with the city. I don't know, you know, if he still is, but I know that we have taken him rescued animals and he has provided to Arguably Happy Paw's a discounted rate. I have also been in contact with Wellness on Wheels. They are a mobile facility. They come to the Tractor Supply. And I contacted the veterinarian and his, and her husband. And they are willing to provide services at a discounted rate if the city is indeed interested. These are just viable possibilities that, you know, that I have looked into for the city. The last thing at the bottom, I could offer a suggestion if you notice on the bottom of the second page. The city, I would suggest if the city have the opportunity, or representatives of the city, Austin, Texas, has a stellar program. And it's through the city and the Animal Control Department in conjunction with volunteer organizations such as ourselves. And they just have set a precedence for the state. If you would, if the city would have an opportunity, or representatives to visit with that facility, I think you would be very impressed and get an idea for the possibilities. We want to be the next Austin of the Valley. We want, you know, to set a precedence for our community. And we do involve student volunteers, just, I'm adding this at the end. We do have student volunteers that show up to help at the events also. So we are trying to create a culture of compassion with, you know, with our children. And it starts there. We don't have to add anything?
The one thing that we also, we particularly, as far as, once these animals are, we're trying to rescue them, we, you know, we give them the care that they need to make them adoptable. It's more towards, we understand that we have a lot of families, you know, with very low income. You know, they can't afford to go buy, you know, these very expensive dogs, you know, at other places. So from here, it is a free adoption. So you see the smiles when it comes to the elderly, you know, the elderly and of course, the small children. Okay, when these animals become available, they come, they pick, they play with them, they pick and choose which ones they want, you know, and they take them. And of course, the work we surround, and we kept others, you know, my friend, my little brother said, "My friend got a dog, now he wants one." But it's more, it's more, I guess, it accommodates most families, I guess, that have a low, very low income. Okay, that's the other thing that we, we give back to the community as well.
And lastly, one of the most important things for me would be if the city would help us in spaying and neutering, that would be a homeless population tremendously. In some cases, we have a lot of problems.
Wellness on Wheels did say that, you know, there would be a possibility to do clinics, and that they would come and at a very reasonable rate. That is something that they did stress. Of course, they didn't actually give me a dollar amount, but, but they're impacting the Valley in a lot of places. And they do come to our community right now, and they do have a good turnout. But we're, we want to be more inclusive and include more people and, and, you know, with these animals. So it's, it's a viable possibility that possibly we could look into.
First of all, thank you all for the long-term work, you know, it's a very cost. I was asking if you could, you know, if you could come. We had talked about providing a program, like mentioned here, to help with the cost of spaying and neutering animals. I noticed in front of our, before we started, that sheltered 14 acres. Could I know a little more?
That's very good. Were able to talk to, like, Penningham, Texas, and Big Island, like, third street.
Low-cost spaying.
Yes. And they gave us some good deals if we decide.
Are we still looking to, you know, that they came to the city and to help with that cost a couple times, I don't know if we ever followed that?
That's correct. Some of their suggestion was to take a number of dogs to their facility for weight, so that they can do the work, the surgeries. At their location, they say it's a full-length hospital, it's like towel section, surgery section. It's sort of complex operation, rather, that they're doing it here. You know, they would take a couple days to do what they can do there.
How many animals, I noticed you mentioned here, 90% of, 90% placement success rate, 90% of the, 10 out of, 9 out of 10 dogs.
It depends. We pass as many as 28 animals in one Saturday. We have, but that's puppies, that's litters of puppies and things like that. But, but yeah, we, sometimes just 10, you know, but it just depends. It's been slow this summer because people are out on vacations and things like that. And that's why, you know, we stay like with one or two. We don't have fosters or really a lot of rescues. And that's something that we are gonna try to approach, to get more people or volunteers to do that. But sometimes we stay with a couple of animals. And I know that the city does have a deadline for the number of days an animal can stay on the facility. And so we were kind of hoping for some type of amnesty slash sanctuary, call it what you wish, that the animal could have, you know, an extended amount of time to try to be adopted at another time. So, yeah, there's, there's possibilities.
Certainly like to commend that 90% placement success rate, obviously, that is great. And certainly your time, your volunteering, obviously, it's, you can see the passion that you have for the furry friends, which is great. And at this point, we certainly will take into consideration and see what.
Thank you.
And these are all the programs that we're looking at as far as what is feasible to do within the fiscal responsibility of the city, so.
We do, and just to add to that, I'm sorry, we are going to try to do a bit of fundraising to try to supplement things as well. And we are, as I, as I said earlier, we're trying to create a culture with our students. And so on a Saturday, once school starts, of course, we've been like a skeleton crew over the summer because everybody's, you know, vacationing, understandably. But there will be, you will see a lot of children out there. And they look forward to it. So, you know, we're building a culture, one child at a time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have item seat number two. Daniel David Garcia will address the Commission regarding Project Terra Fortes, a recycling program.
How's everything doing today?
Doing great, sir.
So, doing good. My name is Daniel Garcia. I'm 18 years old. I'm from Rio Grande City. And I'm first of all, gonna start by explaining what Project Terra Fortes is, by letting y'all know my mission statement is. Project Terra Fortes is an environmental awareness movement originated out of South Texas. Terra means earth and Fortes means strong. In other words, Project Earth Strong. Our goal is to help unite our generations, to stand together against the biggest problem we have been faced with in today's world. Our mother is very sick. If we do not act soon, it will be too late too soon. Every decision you make is affecting our children and grandchildren. I ask that you find in yourself to help our family, your family. After all, every person in this world is kin with just one touch of grief. Project Terra Fortes is here to educate and motivate, where there's a will, there's a way. I'm here to ask you all to help me start a recycling center here in Rio Grande City. I, I'm not necessarily asking for a processing center. The difference is a processing center is where they get all the raw materials and they obviously process them and make them into new reusable things. What I'm asking for is for, you know, large trash can bins, saying plastic, paper, glass. People call, they drop them off. The city can find a private recycling center that could pay, or we could transport them to McAllen, but I feel that it's a, it's a big thing, especially in today's world, where our environment is a crucial part of everything that we do, especially in a world where our environment is decaying every single day. You know, it's a real, it's a reality. And, you know, when you go out, you go out and you're driving around the city, you see so much trash everywhere, so much, people throwing things where they're not supposed to go, and that's because of education. People aren't aware of the truths that, you know, the impact that they're making. And I have some pros and cons of this recycling center that, that could, you know, start. First of all, it protects the environment, the biggest benefit of recycling. Second of all, energy, reducing the energy consumption because, you know, there's a lot of energy wasted in producing materials. Another one is reducing global warming from burning trash. Justices and sustainable use of resources, conserving natural resources and reducing the amount of waste in landfills. The cons to this are, first of all, location, manpower, transportation, and, you know, finding guidance. But I feel like this is something that could be a great start, you know. I'm moving to Falmouth, Texas in a week. And this project is not for Rio Grande City, it's not for a certain area. I'm gonna take this anywhere I can. I started this in my, in the Rio Grande City High School with the support of zero faculty and staff. It was all students running to fight the recycling program, and it was a success. And I feel that if we can organize this and really get this thing going, could be, we can lead the Valley to a greener future, especially with people like in Rio Grande City and think negativity, if people were to look back and see that our community is, is making a change for something good in this world, I think that could make the city look really well. And that's all I have for you guys today.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Congratulations on having the vision to, I guess, you know, create about the environment. And a lot of criteria, I don't think about those things. Again, congratulations, and I think that's one of the things that the Commissioners have discussed in the past. And I started something that, that gives us, you know, a little push to get things done. And we'll definitely discuss and do something then.
Yes, sir. From what I understand, there's a lot of government grants, you know, that the government have grants for people who are trying to do things like this. So if we could look into them to feature, I think it would be a huge benefit for our, for our community.
I agree.
Daniel, and what was it that you all were exactly doing at the high school?
We would get paper bins, we leave them in every single classroom. We would ask teachers and students to place paper there. Now, the students were responsible for collecting and, and transportation, which was pretty hard, you know, when you're in high school, a full-time student. But that's basically, we would do just collect paper. And there is private companies in the valley that will pay for tons of cardboard and paper, long the elementary. Because I do realize that it does cost money to hire workers, it does cost money to, it does cost money to, you know, keep everything running smoothly. And I'm sure that you all would like to benefit out of that and gain something out of it. So that isn't a problem.
Yes, one thing we already have a company here locally, is that, that correct me if I'm wrong.
Actually, it is BioPapel. We have been in communication with them to start something similar. They market, and they actually take in trucks from all over the state, even out of state. They say, "You have a recyclable product, and we'll find the buyer." It is something we've looked at for the grants with House Texas Development Council. I think it is something that the Council has expressed an interest to have an organization, even with some of, some of the furniture that's sometimes thrown, and it might need some repairs. I've already talked to one organization, they're willing to take on some of this furniture, fix it up, and have it like a Salvation Army, Red Cross, for people who need to replace some damaged furniture. I applaud your efforts. I know that we are looking already as into this. I've got your email here, and we'd certainly like to have your network of volunteers when we start this. There are grants for recyclable bins, and the established relationship we now have with BioPapel is that they can find the buyer for all these products, and that will go back to continue these efforts. So, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
How many volunteers were in your group?
There was a group of five, I'm sorry.
Five?
We did everything, lifting boxes all day, collecting paper, and we had to, every once, every once in a while, we would get a tray of all paper to McAllen. And that was, you know, with no organization, with many staff, or, you know, just a bunch of students. So I feel like we could, I could have a support of you. The city that I grew up in, supporting my project, I, I kind of taking this to be big and, you know, to make a difference in this world, like to start offering in Rio Grande City, that would be amazing.
Student?
They're gonna continue that recycling?
Like I said, it was my thing, and the staff and, the staff and didn't help at all. I'd like to go back and see if I can organize it, but now that I'm graduated, it's gonna be hard. But I'm sure if the city were to, were to lead the example, the school district would be feeling a lot more comfortable to join in and start a district-wide program, county-wide program, I think. The possibilities are all there, and they're bright, there's benefits to it.
Well, it's great to see young individuals like yourself taking on projects that really matter for, for our community and that matters for the world, so, okay, thank you, sir, for making these efforts. And definitely, that's something we are looking and we're interested in moving forward and get some discussions on it. So again, thank you so much for making that happen, and certainly caring enough to actually do something about it. It's great to have all these ideas, but when you actually put yourself and actually do it, that means, that means quite a bit more. So again, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Daniel. Isaiah.
Next, business in order. If, if no one objects, we'll move over to Item 6A, which is discussion and possible action to approve a proposed tax rate for tax year 2016. No objection, move on to Item 6A.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayors, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Laura D'Avversia. I am the Tax Officer Collector for the city, for the school districts and for the city. And in accordance to the provisions of Section 2604 of the Texas Property Tax Code, I have calculated the effective and the rollback rates for 2016 for the city of Rio Grande City. The certification of the appraisal rules submitted by the Stradonny Appraisal District along with information provided by the city finance department have been my source of information, which I have based on calculations to determine the effective and rollback rates for 2016. The rates are as follows. The effective rate is .489776 per 100 valuation. The rollback rate is .497579 per 100 valuation. The rollback rate is the highest rate the city can adopt, okay? If you compare the rollback, if, if the city chooses to, to propose this year's rollback rate, if you compare that to last year's adopted rate, taxpayers are looking at a .01717 decrease in property taxes, in their property tax rate. And, and that is, that can be attributed to an increase in property taxes. There was a 6%, sorry, in property values, there was a 6% increase in values this year. And so it's good news for the taxpayer, and, and it's also good news for the city because it's bringing about $53,910 in additional revenue to the city. So the tax roll will get a, and a stronger build back this year, and the city will be getting additional revenue as well. And like I said, that's attributed to the, the increase in property values.
What was the, the additional value, 60%?
6%, 6%. This year's values are $470,507.92.
What was the total series again, in the taxes?
.01717.
And these are all new accounts that were added to the tax rolls, and they brought value, and it shows growth in the community. And due of this, this growth and this new accounts being brought in, that is why the taxes basically are going down from .51 to .49. That is with the budget that was filed, is based on this proposed tax rate, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good news?
It is very good news.
Yes, it is.
It's obvious if you don't have any questions, those, those are your tax rates.
In your packet, Mayor Commissioners, you also have the calendar for the budget process. It's the last page of that tab. You know, once this action is taken today, Ms. Garcia will set the notice in the paper that will come out next Wednesday. Therefore, having two public hearings on the 29th and on the 7th, and then for the council meeting on the 14th to take action.
And to note, this motion on this item is specific and is set out on the following page, so.
Yes.
The motion is as second page on the.
On the middle of that I provided.
And it is a record vote as well. We have a motion?
To be, motion, this is, okay, a motion to propose a maintenance and operations tax rate of .397201, an interest and thinking tax rate of .100378, for a total proposed tax rate of .497579 per $100 valuation.
We have a motion, we have a, we have a second, a motion by Commissioner Garcia, or second by Commissioner Ramirez. This time, there's a record vote.
Yes. Mayor Villarreal?
In favor.
Mayor Potem Garza?
Aye.
Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez?
In favor.
Commissioner Jones?
In favor.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phil.
Well, we're lowering taxes, all right. Rio Grande City, gonna be lowering taxes, great news. Looking forward to the good publicity.
Thank you, Mr. Phil.
Let's, thank you. Let's move on back to Item 1D, Departmental Reports. Is Baya?
Mayor Commissioner, you do have your reports of the different departments in your packet. In, due to our agenda is quite lengthy with quite a bit of discussion, if I could just have you look at the reports and ask questions to the departments at a later date, unless it's something urgent that can be, needs to be asked right now.
I, I would. I know it's time, however, I do believe in departmental or departments that have something that they want to let people know absolutely, I'm for it. So if there's any department head here that would like to share the great things that are happening within your department, even if it takes a little bit longer, I'm all for it, so please. I know, but this is important because it really represents what Rio, what Rio Grande City is doing for the residents, our residents, so. Any departmental head that would like to? Alex?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'm real excited with our review as far as our recreational for our community and our kids. I know the whole year's been successful. I know you have a copy of the revenues that have come in through the programs that we have implemented in. I do like to mention that, that we ended our best and goalie program. It was, again, real successful. We registered 310 kids for that event. We installed volleyball girls for the first time, and we registered 22 girls. They got to play seven games, they got to practice for a month. So I know that's gonna pick up next year. In our Parks and Recreation Department, we hosted a men's three-on-three tournament on August 5th. And we had eight teams, we had an adult league, it was great. I know that the community wants, wants us to continue having it maybe every month, one day out of the month. We also started our, we registered six co-ed softball teams in adult league. They play on Tuesdays, they started last week on August 9th. And we registered four men's softball. And those games were played on Wednesdays, and they started in August 10th. So it's a, rather a 10-game schedule on both, both of them. So, in our skate park, I'd like to mention that I'm real excited about that. I don't know if you're familiar with the Texas, the Games of Texas that McAllen hosted. I actually went to an event in Brownsville, the skate park. And I talked to Richard Kraus, he's the superintendent for the, he's the superintendent for the recreation, for Parks and Recreation in McAllen. And I was wondering if maybe we can host it over here this coming, this coming year. I know they have a two-year thing, and they're affiliated with the TAF, Texas Athletic Amateur Federation. And so I talked to him regarding, maybe we can host it this upcoming year. And if it's not possible, maybe we can do a little pre-trial before the Texas, the Games of Texas in McAllen. So, you know, I, I think it's possible. I know that I talked to Mr. I know that I talked to Mr., I'll go with his first name, I don't remember his last name, Ray from Brownsville, and he's the one that hosted the event over there for the Texas Games. So, I'm really excited about that. Also, today, we hosted, they hosted a, the City Empowerment Zone, the Boys and Girls Youth Club, the City Crime Trappers, the Prevention and Restoration. They hosted a Back to School Supply giveaway, and they were giving away books, pencils, backpacks. And there was a total, I would imagine, about 195 kids that got it, because I know there were only five bags left, and they actually bagged in 200 bags full. And we also are having an event at the Vasco de la Park on the 27th. It'll be, the Border Patrol is hosting it. It's a cute, community outreach event for the parents and children, just to meet and greet our local law enforcement agencies, the community will enjoy food, music, games, prizes, and pictures with our law enforcement, and they can have any questions, they can ask any questions. We're also gonna have the Border Patrol helicopter land in one of our fields, and so they can showcase the helicopter to the kids. So, we do have a lot of things coming up. We also started our early registration for our youth flag football and tackle football, and that's been successful. So, you know, we're doing good. We're doing real good.
Did you say pictures with Río Grande City's finest?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
And I'd like to go with the, with the Boys and Girls Club. As of today, we have registered 50 kids for our after-school program, as we speak. And I've also, we've spoken to Valley Metro regarding to, for them to work together to help us pick up children from certain areas. They will be picking up kids from the Roque Guerra Elementary, North Grammar, J O in Orosa, and Ramírez Elementary. As of now, we have six kids, six kids from Roque, eight from North Grammar, and four from Ramírez Elementary. So, you know, we're in the process already, and I've spoken to Minerva, the director for the Valley Metro.
Fantastic.
So, just to let you know, keep you guys updated.
Thank you, sir. Looks like you have your hands, you're doing great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other, yes?
Ms. Erazo, good afternoon, good evening. Ms. Erazo could be here today. She's being a mommy this evening. Let's meet the teacher. And I just appreciate a few moments, so that I can share with you the wonderful things that are coming along with the museum, the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center. We've already hosted three events, and they were very successful. The people that have come have nothing but great things to say about our facility. And we're getting ready for a second exhibit. The first one, of course, was the commemoration of the strike, and that was an external motivation for us to start our first exhibit. This one is internal, and it's in conjunction with the Viva Mexico, celebrating our roots and our heritage. And what better way to do that than to showcase a aquero and a cowboy and local ranches? I've reached out to several local ranchers, and I'm meeting with them. We're bringing in artifacts, articles, este, monturas, chamoscadoras, chaparreras, branding irons, because what we wanna do is, we wanna be able to not only conserve our history, share it, but we want schools to be able to come and say, you know what, they're having this exhibit on this given month. It's time to take our fifth grade social studies kids to see that, so that they can learn about our local history. It's not taught in books. You've got Texas history, but there's not a book anywhere that teaches that in the school itself, for the region. So, we're doing that for the city. We also want to promote tourism. We want people to be able to drive by and say, you know what, my cousin was here last week, they said, stop by and see the Kelsey Bass. They have wonderful things there. And so, those are the things that are coming along. I was told to think big. Well, I do. I think big. And so, the support that you are giving us is really appreciated, and we're taking maybe steps, but we're following protocol. And that's gonna take a little bit more time. Come by and see us after September the 10th, and see what we've got there.
Thank you.
I just want to, real quick, and good evening, I know that we have a lengthy agenda.
It's all right, this is, absolutely, and this is very important, so, good, I need a director, please.
During the spring art walks, we were approached by the South Texas Food Bank to see if we could find a local artist, because every year, they have fundraisers for food banks that they go, that they oversee from Rio Grande City all the way to Del Rio. And they always have a silent auction, and at that auction, they said, we've never had an artist from Rio Grande City. So, I took it upon myself, I said, we're gonna find someone. So, at every art walk, at every opportunity I had, venue an artist, or somebody came into library, checking out art books, I was asking. Well, I'm happy to announce, so we got Daniel Ferriar, and he donated a very nice painting. So, it'll be auctioned off this Friday at the Empty Bolts fundraiser in Laredo. So, I'm super happy. Thank you.
Ms. Nomar, you just got funded a 3D printer?
We just got, through the Texas State Library and Archives Commission, they selected seven libraries, one from Starr County, which is us, McAllen Public Library, FAR, West Echo, Edinburgh, and I'm missing one more, Mission, I believe. And we got a 3D printer. We'll be getting a 3D printer. And they'll be, we'll have training, and we'll have the equipment. It comes with a little cart. It'll be ordered in September, so we should be receiving it in October. So, we're very excited about that. And we are looking into some possibilities. They want us to partner with a group, so we can get the hang of it, and the kids can get the hang of it. So, we just got that. And also, we got a notice today that we are accredited for 2016, 2017.
What is the value of the 3D printer?
$3,000, and I believe that, and the cart is another like $1,005. And then, plus, we'll have some materials as well. And we'll have the Edinburgh Library, I believe, they're the designated people to be our, go to if we have IT problems with the machine.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. And certainly, thank you for getting a local artist to donate their time and effort. And I know to Daniel Ferriar, who'd be great to, to be willing to provide this.
Yes, it's a beautiful board, a beautiful painting. And Grand Pump Road Road, if anybody remembers that group, that's gonna be the concerts right in Laredo.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please do not, let's not get into the lengthy agenda, let's forget that. Again, it's focused on departments. Anyone else?
A lot of our department heads are at Meet the Teacher events, but they've all been working diligently, especially to close down the year, working to close out open POs, close out any latest in their budgets. I will say that I, finance has been working late. We did talk to their auditor today. It looks like on next council meeting, we will have an audit.
We will have?
Yes, sir.
All right. Great. Things looking great, Ms. Garcia.
All right.
All right. Anything else on those? All right, next business in order is item 2, consent agenda, which is all matters listen to consent agenda, considered to be routine by the commission, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, however, discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have letters A and B, approval of departmental travel requests, and approval of EDC action from meetings of August 2nd, 2016, and August 17, 2016. This time?
I'm all of the group items, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramírez to approve items A and B.
A second.
Have a second, Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Next, business in order is item 3, ordinances, letter A, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2016-7, regulation of food establishments, including food service establishments, retail food stores, temporary food establishments, mobile food units, and roadside food vendors.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the second reading. From the first reading you requested from Mr. Milan to include the application and the fees. He is here, and they should be in your package. Mr. Milan?
That's right. This is the second reading for the, for today, be a matter of understanding to Starr County, so that we can proceed and perform the inspections through restaurants, and of course, there'll be some fees. I can ask for the ordinance and meetings we've had in the past, committee meetings, that some of these establishments, to be clear, they have existing permits from the other entity. Therefore, those permits, valid permits, they'll be honored until they expire. Does not mean that we cannot perform an inspection again, but we will still, you know, be able to perform the next permit when time comes.
So, are we ready to move on this, Mr. Milan?
Yes, sir.
Once we, okay.
And to be clear, these are the same rates that the county was charging?
That's right, exactly the same rates. That's one of the promises, if you wanna call it to the community, that no changes are basically made, other than instead of going to different offices, it'll be all in-house.
Now, you also mentioned you're bringing in someone from the Department of Health to assist on the initial inspections.
That's right. As a matter of fact, we're gonna try to meet tomorrow with some of the people with the state and other municipalities, to make sure we perform the inspections the way we should. And this ordinance, it also includes the new changes, faster mandates of the state of Texas. When we plan to start with this?
So, this is everything?
Yeah, one last question, how do we plan to modify the businesses and community? We, in the past, we already started on that. We, as a matter of fact, most of the restaurants, places, they've already been asking us, and the Starr County themselves, they have sent them to us, so this, at this point, is already no surprise.
It's time to move on, and it's really good. And just to reiterate that point, that the rates will remain the same, that nothing has changed, or...
It has not changed.
Just to be clear, that rates will not change at this point.
And again, it's an in-house complete application, I mean, there'll be the building inspection, the health inspection, you know, border enforcement, whatever issues you might have, it'll be in-house. We'll have to work at different days, and basically, be ready when it's ready.
Mayor Commissioners, you know, code enforcement is not the most popular in the city, but it does keep our city orderly. I will say that they have started doing the fixed schedule to work on weekends.
Yes.
So, they're out there.
Again, I like Police Department, we don't offer a protection, we just tell people what to do, so they're not exactly popular. You'll never hear, oh, they're such a great team.
But make sure we do it with a smile, Mr. Milan.
Oh, yes.
A big smile. Thank you, Mr. Milan. All right, do we have a motion?
Possible.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramírez, and have a second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Motion carries. Next, business in order is item 4A, resolutions, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2016-18, opposing a new proposal from state and federal authorities calling for aerial spraying of herbicides onto the banks of the Río Grande River for the eradication of Arandu, is that Donex, AKA Carrizo cane?
Mayor Commissioners, this item was before the council at the last meeting. We do have a representative now, I did meet with them. They, Ms. Erica Sines is present, who answer any questions? And this is basically Carrizo Spring that goes along the riverbanks. And as it pertains to us, at our new water treatment, water intake pumps, we don't have a problem with that, but at the old water intake pump, we do. This is both a homeland security and an international issue with this new state law that will be effective September 1. Ms. Erica?
Yes, Erica Sines. Good evening, Mayor Villarreal, Río Grande City Commissioners. I'd like to first thank you for giving me the time to speak to you about this important issue. I am a biology student at Texas A&amp;M International University, and I'm currently doing an internship with the Rio Grande International Study Center, and, which is a 22-year-old environmental nonprofit organization based out of Laredo, Texas. And our mission is to protect and preserve the Rio Grande and its green spaces through advocacy, research, and by national collaborations for the benefit of present and future generations. And so, today, the reason I'm in Rio Grande City is to speak to you all about State Senate Bill Number 1734, introduced by State Senator Carlos Suresti, who is based out of San Antonio, Texas. And it tasks the Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board with the goal of eradicating Carrizo cane along the Rio Grande Banks. And now, my organization is in agreement with Texas government that Carrizo cane is highly invasive. It's a detriment to our ecosystem. It competes with native vegetation for resources such as water and habitat. And of course, it's an obvious hindrance to Border Patrol and the Department of Homeland Security. So, in that respect, we do agree that Carrizo cane has to be controlled and managed, those being the key words, control and management. We feel that anyone that says eradication and Carrizo cane in the same sentence has not had hands-on experience with this plant. It is highly invasive, it is very resilient, so eradication, complete eradication is nearly impossible. The methods that we support are, have been developed by, developed by the United States Department of Agriculture, based out of Edinburgh, Texas. The head researcher, John, Dr. John Wolfski, we are in close contact with him. And the method that they've developed is an integration system, which starts with the topping of the Carrizo cane. You cut it down to about three to five feet, that gives immediate visibility to Border Patrol. And then, the second part of the system is the introduction of the Arundo wasp. This species is something that's native to the areas of the world where the Carrizo cane is native, and it's only interested in this plant. And through its life cycle, it actually stunts the growth of the Carrizo cane. And so, Dr. John Wolfski and his team have seen about 25% reduction in the biomass of the Carrizo cane in all of the test areas that they've conducted, from Del Rio to Brownsville. And so, the main reason that we support this method is because it calls for no toxic chemicals. One of the proposals by the Bill Number 1734 is that the Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Board can do aerial spraying of herbicides, and this is something that greatly concerns my organization, not just for Laredo, Texas, but we feel that all of the cities and counties from Valverde, in Del Rio, down to Cameron and Brownsville should come on board and denounce aerial spraying. The chemicals that they wanna use, glyphosate and ematipir, they're known carcinogens in the state of California, and we do not want them anywhere near the Rio Grande or its banks. And so, the resolution that we're presenting, it's been introduced and approved in the cities of Laredo, El Cenizo, and Eagle Pass, and also the counties of Webb, Zapata, Valverde, and most recently Starr County. And so, we hope that Rio Grande City will come on board and join us in denouncing aerial spraying and support for the USDA biological control methods. And we feel that this will give a strong statement to Texas legislature, once they go into session. We'd like to get as many resolutions approved, introduced and approved as possible.
How many do you have thus far? How many cities have?
Thus far, the cities that have, are on board are Laredo, El Cenizo, and Eagle Pass. So, that's three cities, and then the counties are Webb, Zapata, Valverde, and Starr.
Let me ask you a question. Do the private landowner have a say-so in this?
The private landowners, I believe that they would. We are also in contact with Senator Safrini. She was present at our last annual meeting, and she mentioned that any jurisdiction that does not want aerial spraying will not have it done on, in their jurisdiction. However, that doesn't include private landowners. If they are in contact and are willing, they can have aerial spraying.
Rio Grande City doesn't own land along the Rio Grande, other than the Fordice property. The rest is all privately owned, including, including that area that you have just shown us, that, that doesn't belong to the city. We do have water pumps there, but the land doesn't, doesn't, the city doesn't own that property.
Erica, is the spraying throughout the riverbanks, from El Paso to Brownsville?
It's from, they actually wanna start in Valverde County and go on down into Cameron County.
So, the spraying would start in Valverde?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Do you have any Carrizo at the Fordice property?
The Fordice property does not have where we have the new water intake pump, but at the old water intake pump, we do have, and it does cause problems to get it. Now, this has also become international?
Yes, the, as far as the USDA methods, the biological... Yes, the, the, as far as the USDA methods, the biological control, this is something that's binationally supported because the water treatment plants in Mexico are unable to filter out the emasseyed appearance, like the same.
Has anybody tried to communicate with a private landlord?
As far as I know, no. Maybe in Laredo, they have, but I'm not too sure on that. I believe it's just we've gone to the city and council, council governments.
Bottom line is the concern is that we're gonna, if this goes through, that we're gonna continue to have more of a contaminated river. Is that really a concern? With all these herbicides, carcinogens and whatnot. As far as the 500 gallons per square meter, is that per day, per week, per month?
I'm not too sure on that. I want to say that it would be a month, but I'm not. I'd have to get back to you on that.
No, no, that's fine. It'll be mounted and certainly has some good literature on there as far as the effects and the carcinogens and what it's costing as far as water consumption through this invasive species of Carrizo. All right, so any other, any other comments?
No, you all have enough current questions that I'll give.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, Ms. Bayes, anything else on this?
Uh, no, sir. The, the is proved that the biological control agent does work, although at a slower pace than the chemical. I, for one, personally do not want additional chemicals into the water.
Personally, I, I feel the same way considering herbicides and what some of these carcinogens are. Yes, I, I, and how the only good point of the fact of what it's gonna have...
Being aerial and our southe, easterly wind, that can also affect some of the rangers or people who live along the river.
Okay, so.
Hey, will we get more information? We had already voted on this item before.
No, there was no action. There have been no actions because there was no one present to answer any questions. Is that a motion to table commission?
Well, I'm, I'm concerned because it, the area that's shown there with Carrizo is privately owned property. We might have a lease on the, on the pump site, but the surrounding area, it doesn't belong to us.
But this resolution is just to, against the city supporting it?
Supporting, not, not to.
We have no control over private property, but again, it just kind of shows the support for the cost of what the aerial spraying and this chemical is into.
The, the resolution is to support, not to spray. We're not, already it is an enacted law, effective September 1st, to get a program to control it. And I think the soil and water conservation is proposing this chemical to control and eradicate the Carrizo spring. It's, it's passed the legislature already.
It's already passed the legislature and it's already law, so how are we supposed to stop this spraying?
It is something that you'll be taking to the legislature this coming legislative?
It's more of an opposition saying that we don't want this.
Taking a stand.
Taking a stand and saying it's more of a...
We're supporting this.
Some word, symbolic statement, not necessarily when something's already a law and so on. I guess if you have private entities that are willing to move on this, then you're gonna have every force to take that action. However, as a city, do we take a stand and say that, no, we don't want any more carcinogens in a river? Or do we, so that's where we stand? All right, so do we have a motion? What is the?
Just one more question. Let me ask Jackie. If, if the city was to reject or not support this idea, and the private landowner wished to spray it, did it spray it anyway?
That would be up to our legislature. That's something our legislature is gonna be deciding this upcoming session. And that's what the resolution is for. They're asking cities and other, and counties to support the petition to the state of Texas for the USDA's program for pest management. Now, this hasn't been approved. This is not something any city or county would be implementing. But it's just, like Mayor said, and like, you know, the young lady said, you'd be deciding whether you want to petition our legislature for this.
So instead of using the chemical, that they use a biological control agent, like the wasp or the scale?
Is there, the idea is to control it somehow, but what is the least evasive of this, considering the environment and a perfect example, recycling today as far as keeping green earth, saving the earth type of thing? So again, along those lines, do we have a motion?
Along those lines, I think the motion's approved.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-18, which is opposing a new proposal.
I second that.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion on this item? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, Business and Orders, Item 5, Contracts and Agreements. Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action to Ratify an Amendment to the Interlocal Agreement with TML Multi-State Intergovernmental Risk Pool for the Provision of Certain Benefits to City Employees, Retirees, and Their Dependents and Changing the Anniversary Date to October the 1st.
Mayor Commissioners, this is along the, the lines that were, you requested that our anniversary open enrollment date for the health insurance be changed to October 1st to coincide with our budget. We did have to submit this agreement, so our open enrollment can start September 1st. It's a ratification. I don't know, this Valerie, is she, Valerie, Valerie has been working with TML. The rates, she's got the rates as what they was be for October 1st?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. Attached, you have a ratified document that was sent to us from TML, and it states a 2% increase per employee, which is about $6.12. We're getting the increase, that 2% increase now, that we're doing the open enrollment in October, instead of doing the open enrollment in March. We're still gonna get that 2% increase. We're just getting it sooner since we're doing the open enrollment in October or September, so it could be effective October. And the reason for this is so it could coincide with our budget year as well.
So the recommendation by staff is to proceed with?
Yes, sir. And just so you know, the, the city pays 100% for the employee, and that amount per employee is?
It will go up to 31142.
This includes?
It includes the, that, that 2% increase.
It, it includes the health and also the life insurance, the $10,000 life insurance.
Great. Do we have a motion? Second, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? She carries. Next, Letter B. Thank you, Mr.. Letter B, Discussion and Possible Action to Review and Revise Rental Rates at the Lopez Tijerina Complex and Provide an Effective Date for Revision, if any.
Mayor Commissioners, you have my memo with the discussion we've been having for some time on the Lopez Tijerina Complex. Some time back, I know that the initiative came about, Mr. Jones moved to, to bring in some businesses, retail businesses, and we had a lot of foot traffic. Since then, we've had improvements to the area. And it is a square footage rate, then that includes all utilities and the free Wi, the free Wi-Fi that we added. You have there the rates as we have right now. There are three different locations, one along Main Street that has a frontage of Main Street, and then of course, those have a frontage to the courtyard, and then those that are on Mirasolles Street. I think it is at this time that we need to revisit these rates, and I'm proposing basically from 10 to 15 cents additional square foot. This is basically compatible with surrounding rental rates. I know, I spoke and worked with Ms. Alinda Guian to see the different rental rates that were being offered throughout the Main Street area.
And this, at this point, these are the rate, the going rates in, in that area are close to. And it's true at this point that the Tijerina Complex, it's the time that we move on to a business, to a business model where we're actually not losing money.
And it's, and it's still assists, Mayor Commissioners, new businesses with our startups because they don't have deposits on utilities. It's included.
Plus the Wi-Fi, plus.
The Wi-Fi. They have all the, no landscaping because that's done through the Main Street program.
That's electricity.
Electricity.
It's a good deal.
It's a good deal.
Okay, so do we entertain a motion?
Yeah, motion's approved.
See, I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? She carries. Next, Business and Orders Items, or Letter C, Discussion and Possible Action to Review Renewal, for renewal of the lease agreement with Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas for premises located at 405 East Mirasolles, Suite 8, Lopez Tijerina Complex.
Mayor Commissioners, we do have representatives of the Behavioral Health Science Solutions of South Texas, Ms. Christina Peña, I think I see her down there. They're asking for renewal. Their renewal is up on October 1st. We're bringing them up before, you know, 60 days before for any action to be taken by council. They have been offering counseling services. The last time the council approved this lease agreement, it was without any lease payment that they had to provide, that they had to pay, so it had been recharged to them. I did meet with them, and I'd like for them to just come in and say, you know, who they've been serving, how many they're serving, and how the program is, is working here.
Hello, thank you very much for everything you have done. I'm here with Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas, we are in the hall of the office. We're a nonprofit. We're funded by the Texas Department of State of Health Services. We're prevention intervention. We, all our services are free. There are no costs. We have two programs that are using the services at this time. It's the RBI program, which is a rural water intervention program, and also the Families Talking Together is the other program that's using. We use a curriculum, Strengthening Families. It's a 14-session. We do motivational techniques. We do alternative activities. We do referrals. We work with other agencies such as Self-Help Center, Domestic Violence, and Rio Grande Valley Empowerment Zone, and those other, we work with other agencies. We, we service 179 youth and 179 adults. The, for the RBI program, it's 13 to adults that we work with. The, I have a testimony from one of the persons that we serve. I had a drinking and drug problem and was sent here. It was, it has made a huge difference in my life. I've changed a lot and think very differently now. Coming here with Ms. Peña has made me a different person, and everybody can see it. I still have my temptations, but are easier to deal with because of this program. Thank you so much for turning my life around. The second program, the Families Talking Together, that is a survey program. They're doing surveys right now for, to prevent teen pregnancy. They survey youth 10 to 14, and with parents' consent. And this is just to find programs to prevent teen pregnancy. So I believe as a citizen of Rio Grande, we need to work together. I feel we're all in the same team. We're here to help grow Grande for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And how many, as far as clients have you served as far as in the last year? As far as the numbers, you said 179?
Yes, adults and 179 youth.
And that's, so let's say a little bit over 300. Is that for the entire year?
Yes, for the entire year.
And as far as the population, are they mainly, they were the city residents? Are we talking about outside?
Starr County. If, if the, the funds is for Starr County, but more Rio Grande since we're here in Rio, we're right here in Rio Grande, so we get more Rio Grande city citizens.
And are you still working with Judge Lopez?
Yes, Judge Lopez and probation in the school district and the other agencies that are around, everybody.
And as far as numbers, as far as numbers pertaining to the municipal court, how many people do you see that referred through or from the municipal court?
Uh, there's been about 20.
20 for the, for the year?
Very, very much.
Okay, so mainly a lot of the population you're serving is really outside the scope of?
Yes, it's through probation, we're running the school district, and they're self-employed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor, as we are reviving our Main Street program and trying to revitalize it and gearing towards a more retail-oriented business environment, I've provided two, two options. Of course, there's always the option of no renewal. One option would be to renew the lease for one year, starting with the deposit rental lease, or to extend it for two months and have them work with the different agencies that they do collaborate with to have a different space. I know that in the past, sometimes this leased area has looked abandoned, that no one's there. I know that their hours are on an as-needed basis. But in keeping with the revitalization of Main Street, I think it's a very good program, but I don't think the site is appropriate for this type of service.
Is there another place?
We have been looking at different places. I know that the PD has applied for a Victims of Crimes Grant that maybe, maybe could collaborate with the, also with the Crime Stoppers or Crime Victims. They also work with SCAN, Self-Help. Any one of these agencies could maybe provide some space. Other than that, it's up to the wishes of the council. But that is my recommendations I have.
Okay. So what's the?
What, what is our, our capacity there? Is everything leased out right now?
I believe so. We have actually one item on the agenda for another yet-to-be leased. We just went through a, a motion to modify or change the rates. I would like to have some sort of guidelines. There are no established guidelines, procedures, application process, documentation to support businesses. We've seen them come in, go out. We've had problems in the past with some of the tenants. I feel we need to revisit this complex and reorganize it so that we have an established process.
I agree with you on that end as far as certain guidelines. What, what is it that we're gonna be doing there at this complex? Considering that it's, going back to the business model, far as conducting business, we definitely need to, to move on that. But let's come back to this here. So what, what are we gonna do? I mean, at this point, so are we saying we don't have any other place?
We have not, we have not identified unless the Chief FTO has some ideas.
Oh, I think that we might have some space up there where something might be available.
So at this point, then, I guess that's...
Why don't, why don't we allow them to stay there till we can accommodate it?
Which would be one of the proposals here.
I think we should give it two months. That'll give us plenty of time to visit the rest of the retails that are around there and see what we're gonna be heading there. And then we can decide where, where, you know, I really want this program to succeed and to be in Rio Grande City. I don't wanna, I don't wanna run them out there, but, you know, I honestly think it's a, it's a bad location in my views, what I see with the, with the Tijerinas. I see it as a commercial use, but at the same time, Mayor, I don't, I don't wanna run this, throw them out.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a good program.
Certainly agree on that note. Being a mental health practitioner myself, definitely the services are very well-intended, and they do provide benefits to, to the community and residents that cannot afford these services, so at this point, I...
I do have that option that the Commissioner says it's an extension of two months, ending December 1st, or at the time that the agency secures another site prior to the... or at the time that the agency secures another site prior to December the first. So if, within the next thirty days, they're able to accommodate themselves in this space that Chief Castillo has, then the, uh, agreement would end at the end of their term. Or at the, at the time that they move into this new site.
I, I saw movement.
Alright, so what's the motion then, just to be clear, make sure?
Extension of, of two months ending December the first twenty sixteen, or at the time that, uh, this organization secures another site prior to December the first twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Rental rates will apply starting October the first, well, no.
Remove that on that note and, alright, so that's the motion.
That's the motion.
Okay, we have a?
I'll second.
Have a second, yeah, a motion by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, is item D, discussion and possible action to review for re, for re, let me backtrack, for renewal of the lease agreement with Marco A. Río DVA Ash Nail Supplies and More for premises located four seven east Mirasolez Street, suite A, and B Lopez Tijerina Complex, letter D.
Mayor Commissioners, you have my memo there, um, we have been looking at this tenant, uh, currently they do not have any liability insurance certificate in force. We have history of poor, uh, payment record. Also, they're never there, what we're trying to have is increased foot traffic as we establish this commercial center. Staff does not recommend a renewing the lease.
So we have, uh, so staff is recommending not to renew it? Any, Commissioner?
Uh, the Mr. Rio Grande, attempt to indicate the city, as far as, uh?
My name is Holly, you've made several attempts.
She hit the I call on Monday, advised when they would be on the agenda.
But for, uh, to bring copies of their insurance, to bring it up to date?
Aye, Monday she said she would try to get by, she got it and arrived, but she did not come out.
Well, I'm glad they haven't complied with many of the requests that we've had.
Since May.
Since May, alright.
I saw movement, Mayor, uh, not to renew the lease.
Okay, so we have a motion not to renew, second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business is letter E, discussion and possible actions to approve a lease agreement with Dina Munoz for rental premises at four oh eight east Main Street, Lopez Tijerina Complex.
Mayor, this is a situation, this is a brand-new business, um, this would fall into kind of what I was discussing a while ago, we have no guidelines, no criteria, um, we don't know if she has a business plan or has any idea how she's gonna go into it. This, she's looking at the area where the yogurt place is gonna be, it will require some modifications. There is nothing in our agreement who's gonna be paying for these modifications. Um, if this can be held back until we can come up with some guidelines, we can fast-track it and have it ready for the next meeting.
Ms. Munoz is present.
Oh, I didn't know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Munoz, um.
Do you like to comment, Commissioner?
Okay, well, I wanted to, um, open up, it's gonna be called Easy Prep, it's basically gonna be like, um, meal preps and like, um, protein shakes and like healthy snacks and stuff like that for the people that are there around, um, the Tijerina Courtyard. Um, I was also gonna do like, um, deliveries for, you know, people that would be here in the, in the city hall or anywhere, like the, even the schools, anywhere, like something for healthy food. Basically, that's what it's gonna, you know, be.
Well, ba- basically where, where I come from, from this business is that we're looking at, at the Tijerina, when, when we first started it and rebuilt it and everything, the commission rebuilt it, we wanted businesses in there that were gonna be open eight to five. And that basically what we wanna go back on doing, you know? We, we wanna make sure that the leases that we're doing, that they're gonna be open to the public.
Yes.
Uh, if, if they're gonna be open and then closed, and open and closed, and open and closed, that's something that's negative to me and that's something that I wanna stay away from. So that was what I was bringing up with, at least, that's, we're, I was telling her, explaining to her, you know, we need to develop something, we need feedback from y'all of what y'all are gonna do, what you guys, what y'all are gonna provide, like services, and, and are y'all gonna be open eight to five?
Yes.
You know, that's, that's one of my main priorities, that if we're gonna be renting there, you know, we have to stay open.
I understand, yes, um, I mean, I'm planning to open it.
Hmm, oh, well, you know, whatever, you know, as long as it's open, because right now the businesses that we're leasing out there, they're, they're, they're all, they're closed, you know, they're, they're, they're not open. And that's not the reason that I have for it.
Yes, I was like planning to open from at least like maybe from depending on what would be like necessary, like from maybe seven to six or seven and nine as well, but planning to stay open. I mean, I'm not planning to open it and like close, I wanna like keep it open as long as possible and then, you know, in the future, if it, um, you know, ends up being good, I wanna open up a se- a second location as well. Just, you know, try to get out, you know, healthy food, because, you know, right now that's the movement of a lot of people that are trying to get healthy. Me, myself, I lost any two pumps, so, um, by doing like Herbalife and like exercising and all that stuff, so I mean, I'm trying to bring that into, and I'm also trying to like do delivering, so like that, the people that can't go out, that are working all day, that they can't go out, I'm gonna deliver that to them as well. So I'm trying to see if I can do all of that stuff, and I've been looking for places, but, um, this is, this seems very convenient, because it's right there and it's next to, you know, downtown where the police station is at and where all the, you know, lawyers offices are at, and I, and I wanna do it, go and deliver to schools, to wherever I would need to here in Rio.
And, and what, what are the modifications that the, uh, business is gonna need there in the building?
The modific- um, really nothing, because it has all of the, all of the, you know, like the outlets and everything that I would need, so really I would just need a?
But you would be providing all whatever is?
Yeah, it would be like a, like a mainly to-go place, because it's really not big enough for chairs or anything like that, so really it would be just like a to-go, if anything, they go and they, you know, I will get the stuff ready for them, and it's gonna be like an in-and-out thing, because like I said, there's not enough room for any chairs or anything like that. So that's why I was thinking of doing the delivering and, you know, and so forth.
Well, no, excuse me, uh, you have here, uh, selling light lunch items, uh, do you have all your permits in place? Because I know that they don't have, there's, for water and sewer, but I don't know that there's already a sink, and if you're gonna be doing meal prep or food handling, those are a lot of food enforcement issues that need to be addressed.
Yes.
You know, I'm not saying not to, but if we can hold back until we have a complete application.
Yes.
So in other words, we need to, what you're saying, Ms. Best, is we need to have, okay, what are the conditions, what is the business plan, what, as far as before we move on to make sure that, uh, as we're?
Exactly, Mayor, like, do you already do this, or is this gonna be a startup? There's, uh, do you have a marketing plan? How are you gonna make sure that your business is successful, like the Commissioner? It is a complimentary business surrounding, for the surrounding businesses around, like you say, you can always, uh, sell it to them, so you have your customer base there, but is this something you're already doing, obviously you're testimonial to the product, but is?
Yes, I, I mean, I've been personally doing it, so I mean, that's why I wanted to, you know, I, I'm gonna make a business plan, I've been, you know, making some appointments so I can go and get a business plan and have everything set, as for the sink and all that stuff, um, I'm trying to get, you know, all of that stuff put in there, of course, I'm gonna have to get that stuff put in there and have all of it fixed up, but I mean, I was trying to do it as soon as possible since the year's starting, like the school year and everything, so I was trying to, trying to getting all of that, you know, fixed as soon as possible. I already went and I looked into all of the permits that I would need. So, it, right now what I'm trying to get is the general liability, so I'm get, I've already got quotes from quite a few places, I'm trying to see which will be, you know, the right one. So, as, as far as all of the permits and all of that, I'm trying to, I already talked to a lot of people, so I'm getting all of that stuff done, it's just I need the approval, so I can actually follow through with everything else.
And, and this is a situation that we've come across before, where so, we've got businesses that have set down a deposit, and then they don't open until maybe four, five, sometimes even six months later, and in that time space, we miss out, and, um, like I say, if you're moving fast on this, que bueno, I mean, that's good. Uh, but we don't wanna wait.
Yes, that's why we need.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz, thank you.
Thank you.
And really, Ms. Best, so how soon can we start getting this in place? Because obviously we need to move on it to where we have everything in place as far as when we consider a business coming into a Tijerina complex. As far as, okay, these are the requirements you need to have before we consider a lease? Because is that what I hear you say, that we don't have any of that right now?
I don't have, the only thing is the intention, obviously it's a good intention, uh, if we move forward on this, I would like for her to be tasked to the Main Street program to get her in place with everything that she needs in the system, obviously we have also the EDC program.
Well, we need to have all that in place, and I agree with you, question is how soon can we start moving on that? So that way we can start considering all these leases again.
I would like to bring?
I too would like to have all that in place before we start, again, going back to having all these leases again, uh, but we need to do our end where we move on and have everything in place.
We can certainly have a draft within the couple of weeks and then finalize it for our September fourteenth meeting.
And I agree, my, my comment was that, you know, I don't think we should start opening up those places for businesses, you know, I think we also discussed, you know, for it to be sort of like an incubator for?
Exactly.
Your businesses, and again, give, you know, just young, and, 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 opportunity to start up a business, I think it's a great idea, you know, I mean, that, you know, we need to continue with that, that concept that, you know, we are there, also businesses to start up, uh, but, and then, and again, same, by same token, I'm gonna make sure that they're ready to go. And we have a process and I need to, I guess, table it, so maybe that she, you know, has all the documentation and everything ordered, that's fine too.
But we have our, our expectations, we have our, okay, we need a business plan, we need to, we need to have exactly what and how we're gonna do, so, as far as, we have to incur the cost of?
Sales tax, there, there's the, uh, obviously licensing with the state, there's the tax ID, there's so many requirements under a business plan.
I just don't wanna go through the same process that we went to with, uh, the shop that was there before. They went in there and then the city had to go through the expense of putting all these connections and, you know, I just wanna make sure that the businesses are going in there.
And that's what we need to decide, how we're gonna conduct business there.
That's exactly.
If this is the way we're gonna do it, and are we responsible, are they responsible, and then decide? But that's something we have to move on, so that way we can have it in place. So, are you, have a motion, Commissioner Ramirez, to table? Is that?
Well, motion to table, so that all the, uh, arrangement, you know, Ms. Best. Munoz, again, you can, you do with the best, make sure you get everything, you know, the paperwork, everything in line, and, and the problem of new businesses, like I said, I think that's, that's why it's sort of an incubator for new businesses to go ahead and start it up, but, again, I think those are concerns, and I would just make sure we have all the documents and all the, you know, parameters, what we're gonna be, funds, work in order before we have to see.
Alright, we have a motion to table, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next business is, uh, letter F, discussion and possible action to approve a lease agreement with the Star County Housing Authority for a building located at two oh four east Nixon Street to be used as a police substation.
Uh, Mayor, Councilman, yes, this, uh, this program already went through legal, um, suddenly I sort of looked over the, uh, the document and actually worked on it and, and, uh, fixed some of the, tweaked it up, and it's, it's ready to go, just needs approval by, by, uh, the commission, and, uh, we should be good to go and, you know, has camera, has everything, we start this center of town, it's a good area for us, a police substation. So, you know, the, the routes that, uh, lead out of that area, this mid-city, they go east and west and north and south, so, you know, it's just a good, good area for the police.
And that was a, was it a dollar a year?
It's a dollar a year, and this is about a year, uh, a year agreement, so we have to do a meeting next year.
To be clear, is a dollar a year for a substation?
Right here with your budget.
So?
How many rooms?
It's, uh, two rooms, got two bathrooms, and, uh, it's got, it's got a locker area, it's also has a small kitchen and, uh, a good, uh, side room for meetings or what, you know, so, you know, that's a good visibility for that area, I don't know, you know, I think it'll be good for us.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we have a motion?
Uh, I have one last question, are utilities included, or are?
I, no, I think the room says that we have, we'd have to take care of the, uh, the, 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 the.
The, the building has a, has a?
Not everybody has a?
Electrical and water.
Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next is letter G, discussion and possible action to ratify the memorandum of agreement with Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District regarding the use of the chance to heat building and the swimming pool.
Mayor Commissioners, this is, uh, the memorandum that we have with the school district for the use of the building. I know Mr. Paradas attended the school board meeting, and apparently they, um, had an, uh, older version of the agreement than the one we had passed. The one we had, uh, approved and passed at this council included the summer track program for two thousand seventeen. The one that they had, it didn't have it, so this is a ratification to have our agreement match their agreement, um, since they did not approve the summer program for two thousand seventeen for the track and field. I know, Mr. Paradas, um, I don't know if you have any questions, so they asked you anything at the board meeting?
No, no, ma'am, they, uh, they didn't discuss anything, they just, uh, uh, just asked to change the year for, to ratify and, and approve the memorandum during the, uh, school board meeting.
Okay, and you're recommending?
Yes, sir.
This action is there?
Yes, sir, so we can continue our, our, most of those programs.
Okay. We have a motion?
To move, second.
Have a motion to, uh, approve or ratify the action, uh? Any further discussion, further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Thank you, Ms. Paradas. Next, uh, business is, uh, letter H, discussion and possible action to approve change order number one to the con- contract with Luxembourg Trading LLC for additional sidewalk and staff slab extensions to the skate park project.
Mayor Commissioners, the, uh, skate park was completed and as, um, I know the engineer is here, Mr. Julio Gonzalez, and Mr. Paradas, I can, uh, you'll have the pictures in your package. The ramps were, were ending at, at a certain angle, and so in order to time of the, we had added some concrete, and you've got the photos here in your package. This was all in concurrence with the engineer, is that correct, Mr. Gonzalez?
That's correct, to the room, uh, Mayor, also, uh, the, the charter for this particular project was, was, as Ms. Best just, just said, part of it, it was for safety purposes, uh, the ramps were fabricated, so, and, and for the, the ramp company plan, they just have like a finish with a cantilever, uh, end. And, uh, when we visited the site, we saw that it was, uh, a hazard for, for the kids, even though there's gating, like anything that they do, like most of the things they're, they're gonna be doing is not safe, but of that, we saw that that was something that needed to take, uh, consideration, and part of the charter as well, uh, Mr. Uh, Jones visited the site and, uh, was request, he requested to add more, more dirt on the back of the ramps, because as per the plans already, but, but the ramp company again, they just have pretty much, pre, a minimum section of, of dirt. It was like some sort of a backfill that we gave.
They, they had a space of about, uh, almost a foot from the, from this, uh, ramp to the dirt, so we added additional dirt to, uh, slope the berm behind the ramp. Staff recommends approval, may?
Okay, we have a?
I saw movement.
Staff approval, uh, recommendation for approval, we have a, a motion, Commissioner Ramirez, for approval.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones? Think I'm already, it's already at the time of the day? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries. Next is, uh, letter I, discussion and possible action to review the bids and award a contract to the following projects. One, Spanish Oak Street Rehabilitation, two, uh, Fujiyo Drainage Project, three, FM seven fifty-five Realignment Utility Relocation Project.
Mayor Commissioners, you do have a bid evaluation and the, uh, list of the contractors that got the bids. I know they opened the bids on August the third. We had, there were three. three separate bids, they had the opportunity to bid on all of them or separately. The Spanish Oak Street rehabilitation is an overlay and a section is an actual street construction, uh, this was proposed in the budget and the bid came in at thirty-three, the twenty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-two ninety-eight by O'Ando Guerrero Construction. The Rupio Drainage, that was the, the one that is on the east side of town, um, I know public works, began working on this, but they came across a lot of, of utilities, fiber optic, gas, or, and felt they did not have the capacity to deal with that, so that was also put out in bids and you see that, uh, Antonio Solis Construction got that bid for forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty.
Nobody else, anybody with bids on that?
No, sir. The third bid came in, this is for the utility relocation of water and sewer, this is for the extension of the seventy-three realignment to the south and, uh, as we move towards connecting that street to the highway, we need to relocate our utilities and that was with Armin Antonio Solis Construction in the amount of fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
On that la- last one, we're not recommending the approval, uh, is the territory projects, uh, even though there were only bidder, one, one bidder, one bidder and, and two bidders the most we got, the, the Spanish Oak and the Rupio, they were just, uh, within the projected budget, on this one, on the sixty-three realignment, it is way too much what we anticipated and, uh, we were like, we were recommending to rebid that specific project, the, the one for the seventy-five realignment utility relocation.
Okay, so, let's get back to that one, so you're saying that it's rebidding because it's, think it's gonna be, should be less than the fifty-two thousand?
Yes, exactly, yeah, and since we just got one bidder, we don't have a way to, to compare it and, and-
And you see the, the memo from the engineer, um, obviously there was a discrepancy in the adding the totals because once the totals were added, that actually came out to two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and sixteen, so it, it, it is an incomplete basically bid.
We have paper or is it not this, um-
Well, you've got three different projects, you can award, um, one and two and leave three to get rebidded again.
Rebidding, we're okay with the one and two, moving on with one and two and then rebidding on three?
Yes, sir, uh, I know the residents have been working and waiting patiently on the city, so we're ready to move forward.
All right, we have motion?
Answer the question. Uh, on, on the forty-five, seven forty, the second project-
The Rupio?
Rupio Drainage, that, that was also the only bid.
That was the only, uh, uh, bid that we got, but that specific project is within the budget.
It will end, it will end the budget?
Yeah, exactly.
It was, it was, uh, real close to the engineer's estimate.
That was just to add, I mean, the, the neighbors around the area, they've been desperate for this project, uh, with these past rains, we got called to the office and asking when this was gonna get awarded and, uh, just to mention, uh, they give up the city by providing the disanaisment at no cost to have, uh, an asphalt for, for the water that gets funded.
Okay.
Mayor, I move that we accept the first two bids and that we rebid, uh, the, uh, realignment utility relocation.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Gazzza, second by Commissioner Ramirez, any further discussion? Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, she carries, next, uh, business in order is item, uh, six city managers report, uh, letter B, presentation by Hollis Rutledge and Associates.
Mr. Hollis is, uh, is not available today, sir, but he did send his report, um, he's been actively working on some grants, he's been, uh, very instrumental in speeding along some of our projects with the USDA, especially as it pertains to environmental, you do have his report, uh, he sends his apologies and hopes to be here at the next meeting.
That gentleman really, uh, moves, uh, I've seen him work in, in action and he definitely does a good job.
He does, and, and his grant writer, Mr. Frank Somerville, is a very good grant writer also, sir.
Next, uh, business is item, uh, letter C, report on the electronic check signing policy.
Um, I do wanna report that we did talk with, uh, several cities as to what type of wardens they had, I know that as we grow and continue, uh, our, uh, duties with accounts payables, and the stack of checks becomes larger and larger, it is something that we looked at and to, and most of them are using administrative in-house policies, um, what we come up, and this is in discussion with our finance director, um, that the process when appeals are inputted into the system, they are approved that by the department head, they are approved by a finance manager, they are approved by myself, and then they go into what we call a batch to create the checks. Um, at that point, we're looking at providing you all a list so you can see the checks that are ready to be prepared, appeals that are approved. Once you all sign off on that, um, and that would be requiring only one signature from either a commissioner or a mayor pretend, we certainly don't want to violate any open meeting violations by having all of you sign off, um, then that would go to, uh, finance and they would print checks using the electronic signature. I know, uh, Ms. Vanessa has been working with ENCODE to see how that can be done through the system already. Uh, we're in that process, um, unless y'all have some questions, uh, we're not looking at just printing and getting signatures on any type of check of any amount, no, from the one dollar check to the fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar check, those you would all see before anyone of them is printed, unless you want to do otherwise, um, like utilities, payroll benefits, loan payments.
Which really, rejection balances, protocols, just to make sure that, uh, that everything is done accordingly and that there's no room for error, especially when, when you're looking at that kind of money, minimizing any-
Wasn't there a, a new marriage to, like, set a limit, uh, if you wanted to come in and sign, you know, something that's, anything over five hundred, you know, that to be signed or a thousand, I don't know what's, what we decided on, but, it's just, uh, you know, uh, I come in, you know, and Grace come in, I see, you know, you know, we come in and we sign a check for two dollars, you know?
Last week, uh, Ms. Gonzalez hand cranked up.
Thirty-seven cents, you know, like-
Um, you know, there's also those type of payments like, like utilities, um, bond payments and, and loan payments, the insurance, employees' insurance, like, those are like automatically basically, there's, uh, they're already approved, they're in the system, um, those could be also in that category that don't require a, a signature, but this is something that, um, we talked about, Vanessa, I don't know, you wanna add anything to this?
No, we, we did discuss it, um, again, it is up to you, uh, but, I don't know, we think we had discussed five hundred dollars, anything over five hundred dollars, um, would be signed off, of course, with your signature, but, um, I know it is an inconvenience, we did have quite a bit of checks that seemed even needed to be signed, um, so we are working hard, trying to get that done, and we are getting it done by September the first, so if you have any recommendations for that, um, please share them with us, um, I mean-
Right now, we're leaning towards, here's the batch of checks, sign off, and we'll move forward. Uh, what's gonna take time is to get ENCODE, uh, to move into the program to establish this electronic signature.
We need to consult with the bank as well, to see what their guidelines are for electronic signatures, we don't want to move forward, ENCODE, get everything going on our end and proceed and then have the bank stop it, I believe, so we wanna make sure these are processed and I started.
We'll be finalizing with that and sending, excuse me, um, a report to y'all, um, what will then become an administrative policy and then having the timing as soon as the bank lets us know their process, so hopefully-
Okay, pretty good.
September first, definitely October one, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, if no one objects, I would like to move over to item eight, executive session, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, five five one dot zero seven four, personnel matters. Objection, let's move on to executive session, it is seven fifteen. Approximately nine eleven PM, back from executive session, and, uh, there are no act, there was no action taken on any of the items in executive session, there is no action on any of A, B, C, D, and E. Moving back to item, uh, six D, discussion and possible action to amend chapter twenty-nine of the Police Department Policy Manual by complete, uh, restatement of the body camera policy.
Uh, chapter twenty-nine is our body cam, our body camera policy and we have it in place right now and, uh, we, uh, we're gonna change it to, uh, you know, to, to go with the, uh, the policy that is required, um, for the granted debt for our body cameras, which was sixteen cameras and, uh, you know, we got thirteen thousand dollars and there's attachments to it, so this is what it requires, it requires the officers to go through, also training in the body cameras, how to use it, how to, how to prove the evidence and, you know, how to handle them and, you know, who can actually, uh, you know, authorize any, uh, changes or have to, to the system, so this, this is what it is, just an update of the policy, so, uh, ninety percent of our officers have already taken the classes required for this and, but we haven't gotten the cameras yet, but, uh, we have to get this to them also before we do this, so, that, that's what we're doing.
And this is a brand new policy, it's basically eliminating the other one and replacing it with this.
Let's have a break, then, to move-
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, next is letter E, discussion and possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus, thank you, Chief.
You have several lists from the Police Department, the EDC Department, Public Utilities Department, and the Finance Department, um, they went all through an inventory, listed all their items, this turned out to be, uh, surplus equipment and since there's an option that's going to be taking place soon, we'd like to have this included.
We can include the Betsy, we weren't gonna get rid of that?
The Betsy had already been taken action, correct? And so that's gonna go on the, on the paper for bids and not an option.
Okay.
We just need to have a motion to declare it as surplus.
Motion? Okay, we have a motion by-
Okay.
Have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, next is item, uh, seven, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on setback variance by Eduardo Marquez on property located at twenty-four fifty-seven Daytona Drive.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Uh, this, uh, item has previously been approved by the Planning and zoning Commission, it is for, uh, the setback requirement to the rear, it's fifteen feet required, he is planning on leaving only five, which clears the eastman. Uh, it was tabled the first time we went to planning and zoning, recent being part of the swimming pool that he plans to build upon was encroaching a little bit on the eastman, uh, one foot to be exact, but, uh, he cleared, he submitted a new set of plans and, uh, it's all clear.
And, what's your recommendation to approve? Okay, we have motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, next is letter B, discussion and possible action on request by Rio Delta Engineering for preliminary and final approval of the replant of lots twenty-nineteen and North half of lot eighteen out of Cortez subdivision.
Again, it has been approved by the Planning and zoning Commission, some of the requirements that already have been taken care of was to relocate, uh, meters, uh-
Yes, natural density.
Yes, and, uh, it's been, uh, most of the suggestions and, uh, recommendations have been addressed already and it's ready for approval.
Okay, and it's recommendation to move on then?
That's correct.
Okay, we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Gazzza, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries, next is letter C, discussion and possible action on request by variances, by, uh, for variances by Rio Delta Engineering for the preliminary approval of the Laredo Estates Phase Two subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, there was two variances requested from, uh, Reg Engineering Surveying and, uh, the first one was the construction of, uh, uh, thirty-foot back-to-back streets with curb, curb and walk and gutter, and that request was denied, a variance, and, uh, variance request number two, the construction of sidewalks along Embassy Road and along the interior streets was approved. It was two, two variances requested, the second one was the only one approved.
Okay, so that's where it says partially approved because one-
That's correct.
One was denied and then two was approved.
So, so the action would be to approve the variance only on the sidewalk?
Only, uh, variance number two, the construction of sidewalks along Embassy Road, that's the variance that they-
Mayor, I move that we approve only the variance for the sidewalk along, uh, Embassy Road, okay? Second.
Commissioner, if I may, uh, present to the client, uh, on this matter, I know that, uh, the, one of the board members from Tani Zulu, which is, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, he was the one who had concern, specifically on this, uh, variance request, uh, just to inform you that the substation is outside of the city limits, we did, uh, lap, uh, phase number one last year and on that specific phase, we paved a section of twenty-four inch to inch, you know, curb and gutter, on this one, we're proposing this name and, and, uh, I guess the concern came during the PNC, uh, meeting. Uh, our client, uh, I guess contacted, uh, one of the, the, the board, uh, which was Mr. Gonzalez, the one that they talked directly, and, uh, tried to, they, they talked to each other to find out what was the concern and all that, I was, when I conversed with them, I was not present when they were meeting, uh, but, uh, they agreed that, well, he, what he said, I was not present, he said that he will recommend a proposal if that, the twenty-fourth section that we were, uh, uh, proposing will, would be added like the curb and gutter, so, all he wanted to see, he was curb and gutter on, on, on the proposed section to prevent erosion and all that, uh, we were hoping to have the, the PNC before this council, unfortunately, it didn't happen, uh, I would like for you to consider that, that, that I said, oh, Mr. Gonzalez is not here to, to back up what I just said, but if, depending on the case, we would like to request, uh, a special meeting as soon as possible because this development has been in full for about, for about a month and, uh-
So this would not result back when you were planning zoning, I'm assuming, or what?
On, on the last planning of zoning, it got tabled, we tried to meet again before this council meeting happened and we don't want, we can wait another month, our client happened like a six, six hundred thousand dollar loan, which they're paying and like the threat right now is a whole-
Yeah, I'm gonna confuse Gonzalez as far as, uh, what, why, why can't they deny the construction of the thirty-foot back-to-back streets with curb and gutter?
Oh, that, back, back then, Mr. Gonzalez, he, he, I mean, the subdivision is only within the ETJ, uh, of the, of the city limits, so he wanted it for the street section to be as is, as is built and, uh, just to be the same as it was until it ends.
And i- if I may, Commissioner Mayor, and, and first of all, in order to consider what you're asking for, then this item would have to be tabled and go, go back to PNC, but the reason that we wanted a fifty back-to-back is because it is right next to the city limits, it is what we require from all our other, um, subdivisions, and I know another developer that has broad subdivisions, they do the fifty back-to-back and that's why we didn't consider it, this is a residential, it falls under the model rules and we have the authority under the one mile ETJ to enforce the city, uh, codes and standards. If we move forward to annexing along the area up to the high school, then we're basically annexing, uh, the subdivision that would not meet the standards.
And by, the plan is to annex, so we need to start moving on, making sure that things are done based on, on city, um-
Codes.
Codes and standards. All right, so we already- All right, so we already have a, thank you, sir, we already have a motion by Commissioner Gasa to approve item two, I said letter two and then number two. It's that late in the evening already, number two, and then of course move on with the denial of one at this time. Any further discussion?
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Well, we have Commissioner Jones second. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Milan. Next is letter D. Discussion and possible action on request by Melvin and Hunt for final approval of the Northgate Phase One subdivision.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is for final approval of Northgate. This is on Sunsex Road. We have the representing engineer in the audience. It's Rio Vista Development. It's all been inspected. Final, we have test results, water quality results, et cetera.
I see here it was approved by planning and zoning.
That's correct.
Now, this is in our five mile?
Yes.
And it has...
I mean, still the five mile or now?
As you asked, within the five mile, we can get the north end of Sunsex Road and...
And your streets are?
Our streets are fifty-foot right away, so it's back and back, curb and gutter.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second by Commissioner Gasa. All those, oh, did I go back and say any further discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right, at this time, we have a motion to adjourn.
If I may, before we, this Mr. Mayor...
Go ahead, Mr. Milan.
Contracts and agreements, I guess this is the time on the Tijirina, Lopez Tijirina complex. You were discussing, you know, some of the stipulations as to who's responsible. Personal suggestion is, you know, to stipulate who's in charge of what or who's responsible because some of these requirements vary depending on the business, especially if it involves food and the new state of Texas rules. And of course, permitting, like Ms. Vaez was saying, that it needs to be stated that they need to, first of all, comply with all the now city and state of Texas requirements before we issue a certificate of occupancy and of course, you know, because we're going to ask for a bunch of things and, you know, who's going to be, again, who's going to be responsible for doing those repairs and liable, liability wise, because some of these changes involve, you know, master licenses and, you know, work on historical buildings, so, plenty more complex than it is in this one.
Get together with Ms. Vaez, Mr. Milan, that we can have an idea as to what recommendations you all would have, because you're right, those are things we need to consider.
I mean, things like the usage of the area, we had some concerns from some of the tenants that, some of the complaints, you got to my office, that, you know, some tenants were using the other areas, like the barbecue or the space areas that were supposed to be used by other tenants. Permits, you know, now everything's going to be in-house, so they don't need to go anywhere else, other than the state controller, Macau. Again, stipulation of who's responsible for the changes and of course, you know, the usage of the whole complex.
Thank you, Mr. Milan.
Suggestions?
Thank you, sir, and definitely get together with Ms. Vaez because I agree. As we're moving forward, we need to have all these stipulations in place before we...
We're responsible because, again, you know, the rest of the business owners, they come to our office and say, well, you asked all these for me, you know, what about those people?
So, it means you get together with...
Yes, sir.
I put it in public, but that's...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Milan.
Responsibility.
Thank you for specifying your responsibility. This is how we have...
We're not there talking, but that's heard of.
I beg to differ, sir. You are popular, code enforcement. All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Nine twenty-five.
Exactly, nine twenty-six P.M.